Dan? Can you hear me, Dan?
Yeah, yep.
Hey, will you mute your phone?
Okay, I'm trying to figure out, I pushed the wrong button or something.
There you go.
You're good.
Okay. Wayne's not here today. I can't tell you why it could be a HIPAA violation, so I can't tell you. First item is approval of the agenda.
Over to you, bro.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Minutes of the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one board meeting. Second, any questions, comments? If not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Approved. Update. From our HIPAA advisor.
Yes, sir. Well, it's good to be here again. Always enjoy coming back to Waukano. Uh, so to get started, we're gonna talk about what we call news and use couple of dates. Uh, we're gonna go over the on-demand training, uh, based training report. Uh, the audit management program where that stands, the association materials. And then we have a couple of other items we want to talk about. So, start with the county breach. So, almost three years ago now, uh, one of the counties here in Iowa, elected official was unable to send emails. Uh, attempting to send emails, they get a message saying they were not an authorized user. Uh, their IT provider found that, um, the technical rule was written into the elected officials' email report, all emails of unknown account, along with the elected official being marked as restricted user within the account. Essentially, this was a phishing attack that had been successful. Uh, someone within the county had received an email, uh, most likely the elected official, and the other individual whose account was also attacked the same way. They clicked on an appropriate link, and the phishing attack was successful, uh, transmitting any information, uh, putting PHI, diagnostic information, treatment information, clinical information, uh, Medicaid Medicare information, along with PHI, EPI, including social security numbers, driver's license numbers, names, et cetera, of eight hundred and seventy-one official, uh, individuals. Uh, because the breach, inappropriate disclosure was more than five hundred, uh, records, this needed to not only be, uh, reported to Office for Civil Rights, but also put in the media, if you think over five hundred records needs to be, uh, noticed in the media. So, we, this is after one of our clients, we've been working through the breach with them. Uh, because of this phishing attack, let me back up for a moment, they were given access to all the, uh, network, uh, computers within the county. And so that's where this information came from. Uh, we reported it to OCR, Office for Civil Rights, uh, which began an investigation, and on the next page, you can see the kind of information that was required was the forensic reports on the breach, uh, their current risk assessment or mediation plan, uh, securities, top security policy procedures, privacy policies, procedures. Uh, this points out the fact that when you're investigated by OCR, you can't just send them your policy procedure manual, they're gonna ask for specific policies and procedures. We needed also transferred, uh, training reports, the audit report, uh, the notice sent out to individuals, and again, because it was more than five hundred records documentation that we notified the media. So all this went out to OCR, uh, they've been reviewing it. Uh, we haven't had a definitive close on this yet, because we were able to provide all this information in a timely manner and in a valid state. Uh, we had fifteen day, working days from the day of the document request to, uh, we had to submit the information to OCR. Uh, we're confident that they'll walk away without any fines or penalties. Now, this is the purpose of everything we do, is to make sure that when we have a breach that needs to be reported, if someone files complaint against the county, we can generate this information, it's all up to date, and we can do it within the fifteen working days, that's the way you're gonna walk away without any fines, fines and penalties, uh, from the breach. So, while we haven't had a, uh, definitive close yet, that's what we expect. Uh, they haven't come back for a second document request, which is good news, it just takes a while for them to work through the process. So, on the next page, uh, it's just a testimonial from the, uh, county indicating that they thought that, uh, we helped them and did a good job, and, uh, kept, as we did what we said we were gonna do. Any questions on the breach, before we move on?
Like on my computer, if that would happen, what information would I have access to? I don't have any health-protected information on my computer.
Well, so there's PHI, technical health information, PII, protected first, PPI, technical personal information, we're protecting both of those. You may not have anything on your computer, but if you had transmitted emails with information, been on email thread that had information, that's one area. The other is if you're connected to the network, and someone successfully gets into your computer, it's gonna give them access to the full network, so any other servers that the county computers are hooked up to would also be a risk.
Okay.
Which is essentially what happened here. The information wasn't necessarily on the supervisor's computer. I, the elected official's computer, uh, but that was connected into the county network, therefore it gave access to all the other, uh, computers on the network.
Okay.
Okay? We'll come back to this in a moment, um, or later on. So, on next page, we have the on-demand training report. It's updated as of the eighth, we re-dated it later, I believe we also check these sections electronically so that we can access it so you can review it there as you need to. Uh, as you can see on the next page, as we go through the different, uh, modules that we've released, if you look down at the lower right-hand corner, we're at seventy-three point two percent completion rate. We'd like to get that up to, uh, at least eighty percent. You can see the dates of launch these, so the one that we launched in, uh, February fourth, twenty twenty-one, uh, cybersecurity part one, we're eighty-eight percent, that's good. Uh, cybersecurity part two, we're down below sixty percent, that's not as good. Um, for the occasional, uh, employees, we're up at eighty-two percent, that's very good. Uh, for the, uh, recognizing addressing security breaches, that was almost a hundred percent, that's very good. So all in all, we're doing pretty well. If we, we'd like to get the total updated percent. But if we look on the next page, where we break it down by department, we can see that except for public health, all the critical departments in terms of PHI, uh, for example, uh, mental health, they're up at ninety-two percent. So we have a, a, a mixed bag based upon department, community services is good, auditors great, assessors great. Um, one that we probably want to, uh, take a closer look at is Sheriff's Department is, is a seventy-two, we'd like to get it up to eighty, but there are reasons why Sheriff's Department has a little bit of an issue getting compliance. The affairs, we'd like to get that up. Um, so the total is seventy-three, so the way I describe that is I would give us a, uh, a B minus. Uh, we have a little bit of work to do to get up to eighty percent, but, uh, you're certainly, uh, up in the highest quartile for all of our, our county clients.
Well, this isn't an, an excuse, this may be a reason. Deb was following this pretty closely, and she kept me, kept me apprised of the departments and the individuals, and I could kinda get on them and they would catch up, that's why we were above eighty before. She's left us now, and just this week, or last week, I started again trying to do what she'd been doing, and so I haven't been as successful as she has, but, uh, in another week or two, we will be.
Well, if you have, if you need any help on that, get ahold of staff, she's very good at running these reports, you can run them for you, download and give you all the information you want, so if you need help on it, just get ahold of staff and, and she'll get you through the process.
To see like that percent, it's really, on the Veterans Affairs, should be easy, you have two people there.
Right.
And so it should be easy, so I, today you're gonna get that caught up.
Well, you were kind of our, our, um, go-to county in terms of getting this done. Uh, I appreciate that.
You give us another couple of weeks and we'll be back up there.
And the reason we wanted up of eighty percent is, going back to that breach that I pointed out, they were around eighty percent, it gives us confidence that when we have to report to Office for Civil Rights, OCR, if they're not gonna come back and say you're not doing that, it's gonna keep you from, from being assessed fines and penalties, and that could be a very costly, uh, expense of county that you're fined and penalized. And then just one last item, uh, first week in December, we're gonna, we're going to, uh, launch next training, so. Okay, heads up on that. And then moving on to the audit report, uh, we're in pretty good shape on that, we have two items that we still need to, um, work on. Uh, the technical safeguards and the HIPAA specifications, or the high-tech specifications, which is also technical, those need to be completed. Um, there's an error in this report, those should be completed Q one of twenty twenty-two. So I wanna get that done before end of March, we'll work on that, we need to get ahold of all, make sure we have everything we need, and, uh, but all in all, I don't lose sleep at night over where we are on this, in terms of protecting you from fines and penalties when we have breaches. Then the attestation materials, I put in the back, so we gave you your substantive attestation for the next year, uh, letter, your compliance with the HIPAA regulations, and a copy of the auto report, along with the seal, the testation, they're all in the back. Here on that, we'll go over them. They're all good. You'll be on a couple new things that we have, so we have, uh, a new support tool on the homepage of our website. There is a chat box, so if someone is working through training or process and they need some help, they put it on the chat box and we'll tell you where we're there or not, we're there basically, uh, seven to six, Monday through Friday. Uh, if they're not on the chat, we'll respond by email, but it's another way to, to contact us, if anybody who's working through the HIPAA and needs any help. Once we begin a chat, we can also, uh, turn that into a phone call. So, start a chat and then we can, uh, launch a phone call from that, if we need to. If you wanna schedule a meeting to go over something, there's also an icon there, schedule a meeting, and, uh, we can go ahead and do that. So that's new in terms of support. We also, um, the next page, have partnered with a company called Mobile Four, which is one of the premier cybersecurity training organizations out there. Uh, we're offering that now to our clients, it's a pass-through on the boss, if you like, the mobile four to get this same service, that's what we're charging you, plus a nominal fee for managing it, so you don't have to do anything. Uh, and what happens is employees get a, a quarterly email that tests Uh, and what happens is employees get a, a four-way email that tests their cybersecurity knowledge. Uh, basically, it's a, it's a white hat, um, phishing attack. So it looks like, you know, entered when a five-night, four-day, five-day, they gave you the bomb, I kinda think, something sticks on it. Uh, we understand what's happened, uh, and they get additional training and generate reports on that. Um, we respond to potentially infected emails that are tracked. Uh, emails are seen training on how to adopt, how to identify a potential attack. There's quarterly, uh, screen reminders, uh, that are required under the HIPAA regulations, and then there's a quarterly report that we go out, go over with, uh, management, with the supervisors on a quarterly basis to where you are. The most likely way that you're gonna have a breach right now, uh, is through a successful phishing or spear phishing attack. I mean, the number of attacks are proliferating on a geometric progression. Uh, and so, as what happened in the other Iowa county, uh, two people clicked on a malicious link, and all of a sudden, you know, they had a seven-hundred record breach. And so, under our current training, we do provide, uh, security, um, uh, cybersecurity training, but this sort of ups that. Again, it's a pass-through from NoBefor. And we get a discount for, for the volume that we license. So basically, uh, we make our margin off that difference in, in pricing, uh, plus the, uh, the management. So if you wanted as a county to, uh, sign up for this, uh, it costs you forty-seven hundred and eighty-two dollars for the year, and this pricing is good through, uh, ended, ended December. So, something for you to think about. Uh, aside from the, from the revenue we generate, I highly recommend it because it's the number one way you're gonna have problems, uh, in the foreseeable future, is through a, uh, a cybersecurity attack, which won't be technological, will be, be people and processes by, uh, clicking on a malicious link or opening a malicious file.
So that is training for everybody. It's, it's above and beyond what we've had.
Right. The biggest value of it is these quarterly, what I call white hat phishing attacks. I mean, they're benign because we're doing them, but people are getting emails, and it looks like if you want something, or it's coming from someone in the county. And so that tests people's real-world knowledge on how to identify a potential, um, phishing attack. And then if they click on, and you know, a malicious link, we know immediately they get additional training. Uh, we can follow up with it, uh, run reports on it, and we also get additional training that gets given out on a quarterly basis. So it's kind of built suspenders on, on cybersecurity training, because we already some of it. Uh, but, again, we think it's beneficial to, to be fed up with people, not only for here at work, but also at home. I mean, once you understand how to identify these potential attacks, uh, you're far along the way to make sure they don't happen.
Okay.
Okay.
And still, if we sign up for this, it's still gonna go, get back to, if someone falls for the breach, we still are gonna have to be making everybody take that additional training.
Well, there's two pieces to it. That person will immediately be offered training if they hit, if they hit the malicious link that we sent out. Everybody will get additional quarterly training. And the other benefit is you're getting the, the required under HIPAA security reminders that, uh, need to come up periodically. And all that, the overhead for the county goes away on that, as part of this program.
Okay.
Okay. Now, next page, we are actually launching a new service, uh, for smaller organizations or for departments. Um, it's called HIPAA Express. Uh, we hold a weekly workshop where we introduce the express. Uh, what we're doing is a referral program with all of our clients, so with the counties. You and Wapalo County have assigned a promo code that is on this. If you refer anybody who comes to the, um, the weekly webinar that we hold on the HIPAA Express, you are entered into a drawing, and what we're doing monthly is giving away, uh, one of our services, uh, for value through two hundred dollars. Uh, if you were to win, uh, we basically credit that against your account moving forward. So you probably wouldn't want to go to the HIPAA Express, although it's a good way to get someone inside the county to get trained. That one really needs to happen in terms of managing the program. Uh, so you have the option of going to a HIPAA Express, or we would just credit your current services. Uh, the chances of winning are no worse than one in twenty-five. So it depends on how many people are entered in the drawing. For every twenty-five people, we draw another ticket. So, yeah, and, you know, this is just, we're offering it to anybody, you know, if you had, if you referred us to one person that went to the webinar, you get one ticket in the drawing. If you're referred us to two people, and they went to the webinar, you get two tickets in the drawing. So, you know, your, your odds of winning basically go up, and so the value of that is through two hundred dollars. It can be someone in a different county, in a department, in a different county. It can be a local hospital. It can be someone who's working with, you know, um, you know, behavioral health. So, uh, this code, referral code is unique to the county. So anybody that, that you chose to, let's say, email, we can send you a sample email, what to send out, uh, if you're interested. And they, they go to the webinar, they'll put this code in, and you get credit, so.
Okay.
And it's a training webinar, so we're not really selling them anything at the webinar. We're just doing a, a training. So, uh, there's value for them to go, whether they are interested in the HIPAA Express or not. Just wanted to leave that with you. And beyond that, uh, just to, I guess, um, reiterate, we have a new offer to, to beef up cybersecurity training, and we need to work on getting the generalized HIPAA quarterly training up as eighty percent. As I say, Steph will help you if you need her to step in and run the reports for you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Well, thank you, as always.
My pleasure. If you need anything else, just let us know. I believe you also have an electronic version of this.
Okay.
And, um, there are no questions, if you don't mind. I'm gonna bug out. I need to get home this afternoon.
Thank you, again.
Well, we have a great Thanksgiving and this Christmas, and, uh, yeah, anything, just let us know.
Okay. Review and accept weed commissioner report for two thousand twenty-one, and appointment of two thousand twenty-two, weed commissioner for Wapalo County.
Uh, in front of you, you have, uh, the report for last year's conference weeds. Um, we're seeing an uptick in thistles and other, uh, options, uh, fairly recognizable, uh, you know, thistles, thistles, cool thistles. Um, and it has been a significant increase here, I've noticed. Um, as for appointing, we, we hired somebody, and we funded them, and they've left us. And so, that's basically, we just need to do this for the state of Iowa.
So we can temporarily, uh, appoint you to do this.
Until we get somebody else.
Till we get the weed commissioner hired.
So we get, yes. Um, basically, it's pretty much done for the year. We won't be spring, March, this way until spring.
I'd entertain a motion to accept the weed commissioner's report as presented.
Some of.
Second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, say no. And I would entertain a motion to appoint Jeff Skolberg temporarily as the weed commissioner.
Some of.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Personnel. Request for payroll acknowledgement, new hire, Barb Yerkowski, temporary receptionist for Public Health. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Request for payroll approval, new hire, Alora Johnson, Docson dispatcher in the sheriff's office. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Request for payroll approval, new hire, Rachel Fisher, veteran service officer, uh, in Veterans Affairs.
Overproof.
Second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, say no. Any other business? Do we have a heat problem with the jail?
Nothing.
Not. Uh, someone put on, did you get it? I got one said there the employees out there are cold and, uh, and, uh,
Get what? One what?
An email. Uh, is email or message that they were cold, and I just thought you'd not said anything to us, so maybe.
I guess that's probably where we should start.
Well, today's the first I've seen you.
Well, I'm just saying that.
They should have emailed you first.
Yeah, but you know what it is. When they don't want the right answer, they don't go to you.
I'll inquire. They said it was in the jail?
Yeah. And I got, uh, if you stopped by, I got from, uh, U Kane. The answer on that. Anything else to come before the board? Second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, say no. We are adjourned. Should I sign these words as chair?
Or you can just, the vice chair, or you can sign it and all this add that.
Okay.
Give me that title.
No?